Bill is going to be a little bit late, so I think we're good when you are. Okay, since it's 6:47, we're going to call the school committee meeting to order. First order business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, we have our student report.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Beasty and I'm a senior at Walpole High School. With students preparing for the end of term one on October 31st, many classes prepare for unit tests to end off the term. Fall sports are nearing the end of their seasons with football preparing for their last home game and senior night on Friday. Boys soccer having a big win for their senior night on Tuesday. Girls field hockey having an impressive record and win at their most recent game and girls soccer with a tie at their most recent game. Student council prepares for their biggest fundraiser of the year on the weekend of November 8th and 9th, doing yard cleanups to raise money for their program. The community service club is doing a few drive that ends November 21st and just had a very successful cleanup day. The Morgan's message chapter at WHS just finished hosting their last dedication games for the fall season. The photography club's theme this month is sidewalks. The math team has their first meet November 6th at Sharon High School. The French club is hosting a French trivia event October 28th. Walpole High also started up a book club where students can read and discuss books with other peers. Overall, the last few weeks at WHS have been great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your informative report. We're sure you have tons of homework today, so you have a wonderful night. Excellent. All right, new business. We have student staff and community engagement director update.
Yes, we'll let Naomi Austin highlight her priorities and initiatives.
Thanks, Victoria. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Naomi Austin, Director of Student Staff and Community Engagement. As you may have noticed, my title has shifted a little bit, but this represents a continuation and expansion of the work that I've been leading with a deeper focus on collaboration. So I'm really excited to step into it. This shift also frames the focus of my work for this year as well. So last year I came and shared my entry plan and I figured it would be helpful to also share, reshare these focus areas as a lot of my work is grounded in it for this year. I'm really focused on student voice and empowerment, classroom collaboration, staff professional growth, community and family connections, and sustaining momentum. And I'll actually go into how this, what this looks like in practice. Starting with our students. So I have the opportunity to co-lead lessons on harmful language with teachers in our upper elementary classes across the district. So I've been to about half of the schools and in upcoming weeks will go to the rest of the schools. And this is a really exciting opportunity for me to be back in the classroom. This work is not only centered on what harmful language is, but building an understanding of student leadership and their role in this. So we really explore some questions, thinking about school culture. How harmful language can impact the culture? And we really emphasize what builds a positive school culture and how that is our priority. So students start to think about how harmful language can pull away from that positivity and what their role can be, such as being an upstander. What does that mean and how they can, you know, step into leadership that way? They also identify troubled adults within their building and consider who they can turn to if harmful, they experience harmful language or they hear it and are not sure how to navigate it. And this has been a really awesome opportunity. I'd say this past week when I was teaching a lesson, one of the takeaways a student wrote when they said, shared one thing that they learned was that their voice matters and they can make a difference. And that really stood out to me. That someone walked away saying, you know, this is something that I can really lead in. So this is an exciting opportunity to really see our upper elementary students step into leadership. Shifting over to our high school students, I am also co-leading a group called Voices at the High School with Atisha Winslow, our MECO director, and Jill Kimball, our ELA director. It's a newer group, stands for Voicing Our Identity, Culture, Experience, and Strength. And it's really centered on students using their voice and becoming strong advocates. They have some exciting ideas for programming involving families and some sort of showcase in the spring. They're looking forward to doing some partnership with elementary students and mentoring. Some students were involved with mentoring last year and so they're hoping to bring it over to this club this year. And it's a really awesome opportunity to see some of our students who might have been a little bit shy or step into leadership and start this new group. Shifting gears from our students and focusing on building leadership capacity, there's been some exciting opportunities that I've been a part of and got a chance to lead. First being work with our support staff. I've been able to bring professional development to our ESPs, our recess and lunch aids, and our extended day staff. This has really been rooted in building their own skills and capacity and also bring professional development around interests that they're looking to expand their learning on. They're such an integral part of our school days and so it's been also great just to have some face-to-face time with them and looking forward to expand those connections as well. We've also started last year, school equity teams. So each school in the district now has a school equity team that is comprised of leaders from within the school and they're really focused on guiding staff conversations, really around centering their own culture, bringing up initiatives that are really important to their own school buildings and stepping into leadership. Last year, these teams were established and this year, the teams have been underway, really stepping into action, providing resources, really guiding conversations and going, creating newsletters and really going beyond their, you know, own capacity and really even what I expected from this group. So I'm excited to see those school equity teams expand and I've gotten a chance to partner with them, but they're really school-led. On the district side, I also have a district advisory team that I co-lead with Billy Ty, our Equity Ambassador and a high school teacher. And this is a group that is comprised of folks from across the district, so each school has representation. And there's also representation from the district side, support staff, teaching staff. And this is more of a sounding board for me. So this group is really serves as an advisory as I bring different initiatives, I bring it to the group, hear from their own perspectives, how it might land with their own buildings and consider their own experiences. And so they have been a phenomenal group that I've gotten a chance to work with. This started last year and next week we'll have our first meeting kicking off this year for the district advisory group as well. General collaboration and support is just an important part of my role as well. I've gotten a chance to collaborate with different departments and build those connections. There's been amazing work that each of those teams has been doing around curriculum and scope and their own scope and sequences. And so they've brought me into a lot of conversations to look at student learning, look at our classroom expectations and student and staff engagement and really think of it from a whole bird's eye view. And so I've got a chance to have some great collaboration with our department leads and classrooms as well. I continue to collaborate with our administrators and building capacity there, bringing professional development to their own buildings based on their own interests and needs that they've identified and also just supporting them in their own priorities. So that relationship with principals is such a key part of my role and so I'm fortunate to have a great partnership with them. And then another aspect is just responsive support. So my role really is also supporting individual students, staff members, and families as they navigate their experiences in Walpole. I might be pulled in to have one-on-one conversations or just to support principals and counselors and leaders in providing more tailored support. So that's another really important element of my role. A newer piece that I'm excited to move a little bit more beyond the classroom is this idea of community. And so community partnerships, I've been able to co-lead at the Preserve this year. This is my second year attending. We had great attendance, but I'm also really looking to expand our community partnerships and think more about how we can partner with schools and have that relationship with families outside of the school building and also community partners within just Walpole and how I can build those connections. I also have the opportunity to lead Planning for Success, which is our district initiative around school and community culture. So for our leadership team, we are currently evaluating our action plan and looking at how we can really build relationships with our families, considering our families who are already in the district and strengthening those relationships, but then also new families who are coming into the district. What are their experiences like and how we can continue to strengthen that? So I'm leading that conversation with our leadership team. I'm really excited about that opportunity and we have some great things underway. Thank you. That's just a little bit about the work I've been doing.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yep.
Can I ask for these?
Yeah.
Fantastic prizes we have.
That's some fun pieces from our Voices group. They brought that to freshman orientation when they were advertising their club to the freshmen and so we just figured we'd share it with you all.
I love it.
There's chips inside. There are real chips in there.
With this, I love this group. Like I put this aside just to, you know, any student group, I think would be, it'll be fun, maybe one of these times to hear from, like, or have. We always love when students come in. I feel like it just gives another perspective, but you're doing such great work. So thank you.
Thank you.
So who came up with all the marketing on this? Because that person has a real career path in marketing.
It was a collaborative approach, a lot of thought.
It's really great, like the nutrition stuff and how you have it listed there. I mean, this is just very, very clever, so.
Thank you.
Good job. Excellent. Anyone else? Yep.
I just wanted to say, welcome to the district. Now that you've been here for a little, you know, a little more than a year, I think it's always good to have people with new perspectives. So now that you've gotten your feet under you, is there anything that you think we should be aware of at like, you know, the school committee level? Or you've done a great job of sort of explaining all that you do, but is there anything that sort of stands out to you?
I think I just want to highlight the capacity that we've built within our teacher leadership. I think that's an area I'm really excited about. A lot of it was operating at the district level, which is really strong, and a lot of strong capacity has been built over the past few years. But now it's really awesome to see teachers really stepping into these roles and taking ownership in their schools. And so the collaborative approach is really something that I'm really grateful for. I'm obviously a part of it, but they are really taking the lead. So I think that that's, you know, kudos to the schools and the school leaders. They are doing an amazing job.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and I'm really happy to see the role evolve and to be, you know, prioritize collaboration and being proactive. I love now that my fourth grader knows who Ms. Austin is because you were in his classroom, right? I think that's all fantastic and I'm excited to see where you take the family piece. Because it looks like there's lots of opportunities now for students to sort of advocate and make their voices heard and take on leadership, staff, like you said. And it'll be really exciting to see where that goes as it pertains to families too. So yes, I think it's all very, very exciting and I will look forward to eating these later.
Bill?
Thank you again, Paul, for, I read it ahead of time, but speaking in a little late, I think it's a great role. And to Nancy's point, we really look at especially the newer eyes, which are so important for district to continue, as we continue to make sustained progress and movement to have newer sort of eyes looking at our own operations. But the work you do especially, really directly, the inclusivity piece directly translates to student outcomes. The more we can ensure that we're addressing the needs of everyone collectively, especially looking for those in our community who need that extra help, attention, and need to be seen, you know, saying as a district that we're committed to that is really important. So I think, as we say to many of our newer department heads, as we, as we kind of move forward, we want to hear, we want to hear from you perennially as we do, but like, please be sure to look at us as a sounding board to, you're sort of on the front line of this type of work. And so we're trusting and really counting on you to elevate the things we need to know and give us additional ways to support the work you and your staff do in the district, which is great.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That was great. I'm really glad that you mentioned the district plan with goal three because it is such a huge goal with the students and our families and sense of belonging. So I'm really excited for you to be leading this and for us to be supporting you in that. And it just shows that it's a living document and, you know, a lot of hard work went into the planning and you're already starting to show action in it. So thank you.
All right. Well, thank you so much for your time. This was fantastic.
Thank you. Great to see you. Welcome.
Have a good evening.
Okay, next up we have the MECO update.
Yes, we have Atisha Winslow providing an overview of our MECO program.
Good evening, everyone. I am Atisha Winslow. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm going to present an update on the MECO program. The MECO team consists of myself and Ms. Uma Velori, who's the elementary academic liaison. Uma works out of Boydin and Fisher. Then Charmaine Morell, who was the MECO intern in 2023. She returned this year as the middle school academic liaison. So we're really happy and excited to have Charmaine back. Currently, our program consists of 37 students in grades K through 12. We have nine students at Boydin Elementary School, four students at Fisher, 10 students at Walpole Middle School, and 14 students at Walpole High School. So this slide here is about the Walpole MECO and Friends Elementary Bowling Event. We had the bowling event in 2023 with Fisher and OPR, not sorry, with Boydin and OPR. And at that time, we had students invite a friend from their classroom to attend. This year, we did it differently. This slide is here from March of this year where we had students just sign up. Any district student can sign up, any student in the MECO program can sign up and their parents or guardian had to also show up so that way parents were able to communicate with each other. So this was at King's End Dedham. They had two hours of fun, pizza, roller skating. Some students even went into the arcade and played. And it was great that, you know, the principals were there, Bridgette Bill was there, so it was great. The students were happy to see, they were so excited when the principals showed up. That was like the highlight. This is a picture from the Walpole MECO and Friends Middle and High School skating event. So this was the first time we were able to do this event last year where we had students from the high school and the middle school. We had 50 students in total and they all, we had a bus from the middle school, a bus from the high school, and they were transported to Chevoo Skating Rink in Dorchester. So this was also a half-day. They had pizza, skating. Some students, it was their first time skating, so it was interesting seeing how they did. And these events were actually, we were able to provide these events through a grant from BBI. BBI is a program, it's Boston Bridges Initiative, and it's a program that funds social and interactive activities beyond the classroom. So this program helps us bridge the gap between the two communities and students are able to actually, not all the time they're able to stay in the district to be the friends. So this being on a half-day, taking a bus, transportation being provided, they're able to have fun outside of the school environment. Multicultural Alliance mentoring. The multicultural alliance, it mainly consisted of students in the MECO program at the high school. And the students had came up with the idea of mentoring elementary students. At this time, I had more students at Boydin than I did at the other schools. So the students were able to travel to Boydin. We worked with the principal. And one afternoon a week, they worked on either STEM projects or ELA or math. The students really loved it. The first session was seven weeks. It did so well, we were able to do it for a second session. The program, all the students love mentoring, the high school students love working with the elementary students. So this is one of the programs that we're going to actually make sure that they do in Voices. They're going to continue mentoring. The HBCU College Fair. So for the last three years, I have partnered with the Guidance Department at the high school where we were able to bring students to the Reggie Lewis Center in Roxbury. And at this time, the students are able to meet with the academic reps from the different historical black colleges and universities. This year, they actually also had Boston Police Department, some of the local unions there to talk to students who were interested in other opportunities besides going to colleges or university. Our student, if you see in the corner, she actually received, she's our senior, and she received three on-the-spot exemptions this year. So she received an acceptance to Delaware State, Bethune-Cookman, and Claflin.
Ms. Winslow, if I can interrupt you, we have the slide in front of us.
Okay.
So, so I know it didn't make it to the presentation. I could see you look down. So this, this slide, it's called enhancements. Everyone here has in front of them, so go ahead.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So the enhancement slide, it was going over the changes that we've had over the last few years since I became director. So in '23, '24, the MECO director position became a standalone position. And then we also made our elementary liaison, she became full-time that year. We also had the first Walpole MECO and Friends event at King's End Dedham. Then in '24, '25, we had the middle school academic liaison position come on. And we also was able to provide late transportation during the spring, which was such a beautiful thing to finally have late transportation for the high school students. And that's when we also had the first middle school and high school event at Chevoo in Dorchester. And then this year, we are also going to have late transportation starting December. So the high school students will have late transportation for winter and for spring this year. And we're also going to do the skating rink again. It's going to be the first half a day in December. So that's great. Thank you.
Anybody have any comments, questions? Okay, it's all you first, Bill.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your presentation. It's wonderful to hear that folks who interned with us come back for different roles. We love to see folks return to Walpole. I don't know if it would be a question for you, but maybe for Dr. Goff and Mr. Han. I know sporadically we look at when we take MECO students and evaluate. Is that, do we do that every year, every couple of years? When you say when we take them, I mean, like what, in what?
When we accept, in what grades.
In what grades?
Yeah, so we work, Ms. Winslow works with us on that as well. And we, we've looked at the last few years, we made a shift, especially when kindergarten became tuition-free, to identify and look to students in K and 1. The last several years, we get a cap now from DESI around our enrollment, so we have to be thoughtful around that. We've, we have looked at some of the middle and upper grades, like the young lady Noelle who's featured here. She came to us in high school because we, we thought we had more seats available to some students and so we were able to welcome her as a high school student. But we primarily looked at K 1 and 2 to start students. But we have successes and Ms. Winslow looks at that when she's making decisions.
This year, we did bring students in sixth grade.
Sixth grade, yeah. Obviously, there's like a couple of natural places to join, but I didn't know if it was something that we kind of looked at as a buddy every couple of years or, but it's good. I would, ideally, right, yes, have that, welcome them the earliest, probably K 1 and 2, so they can have the longest amount of time in the district in a sort of uninterrupted fashion. So that's good. And I want to thank you two for letting us know every year about, for the MECO lobby days and other things. This is, we're proud to have this program in Walpole and to have it be in Walpole for a long time. We want to ensure it keeps getting the funding it deserves so we can continue to have it here as part of the district. So appreciate that.
Thank you for all the work you're doing, especially the work that supports the students who live in Boston feeling like true included members of the Walpole community. I can attest that the bowling event is a very good time. One of these days, Bridgette and Bill will show us their skills, not just stand in the back. So I'm excited to see that. I know that you have been advocating very strongly for late bus support for your students and I'm glad to see that it's happening. And my two questions are, is that supported through your budget, through the MECO budget? Or was there an additional funding source for that? That's my first question.
Yes, it's through the MECO budget.
Okay. And my second question is, I'm wondering if you could just speak a little bit about why it's so valuable to offer that to our MECO students?
Well, we want the students to feel like they belong. We want them to be a part of the district. You know, I have quite a few students, especially this year with my ninth graders, that are all interested in whether it's cheerleading. I have one that's played football last year and this year. I have some that play volleyball, soccer. So I have a lot of students that are interested in the sports. The problem is, some of them, their parents do not want them taking the 34E home, right? So it helps that we have the transportation so that the parents are able to stay. They're able to also feel like this is my school, this, I am part of this district. Because it's not that I'm just bussed in for school, but education busts out. I'm part of the district. I'm playing sports. And then they're able to get a ride home. So, and parents meet them at that. I have one stop in Boston, the parents meet them there to pick them up, but that one stop helps tremendously.
Thank you. Well, I hope that we'll be able to continue to support and expand that service for our students. And just to echo my colleague here, the MECO advocacy day last year was a really informative and encouraging and inspiring event to attend. And so please keep us posted on the plans for this coming spring. And, you know, last year, there were districts who had, there were districts that had like more students than we have in like our whole first grade. But maybe we can bring like a couple to start and, you know, not let reading have all the glory all day. Thank you.
Can I just ask more about the logistics of the, because I know how important that late transportation is. So is that like, how are we getting them from here to that stop in Boston? Like is it?
So they pick up, right now, there's, they pick up at the high school at 5 o'clock because most sports.
A bus or like a?
It's a van. It's a van that, we have, they said eight passengers.
Okay.
So they pick them up at the high school at 5 o'clock and they bring them to Jubilee in Mattapan, which is the first bus stop on the bus in the afternoon. And parents meet them there at 5:30 approximately, sometimes a little later, but 5:30. So it works great.
And is the goal to like maybe next year to have the whole year?
Yeah, hopefully, yes, yes.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
I was just, I was going to ask a little bit more about the busing too, but I think we've covered that. You said you did the bowling two different ways, where the more recent time, anybody who wanted to could sign up. Is that the way you're going to continue going forward?
Yes. I like it that way because they build more organic relationships.
Yeah.
Instead of me saying, oh, I want my best friend to come. I want them to, you know, mingle with other students, so.
I'm glad to hear that. And then the mentoring that you were talking about, wanting to make sure that you keep that going. You probably thought of this already, but that's a great thing for a student to put on their resume or on, you know, for college applications or, you know, work or whatever. So that's, it's a great skill to be encouraging the kids to do. Thank you for all the thoughts you brought to us tonight.
And Jen, I want to, I do want to say that this is the, she's the marketing genius behind these chip bags. She introduced them at a job fair, was it four years ago now? And she said, we need to have better stuff for our potential new staff. It wasn't Voices, then it was a Walpole Public Schools bag. So she wouldn't tell, she's not going to tell you, so I will.
Oh, that's brilliant.
Love it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for your time. Next up, we have an extended update from Dan Santangelo. Yes, extended day overview.
Hey, everybody. How are you?
Hey, how are you?
My name's Dan Santangelo. Sorry it took me a few years to come up. My wife and I had a baby and that took priority with me, so thank you for being flexible and giving me the time. So thank you for being flexible and giving me the time. I'm just going to go over a brief overview of the program, give some updates, and, you know, we'll allow some time for questions at the end. Up here, you'll see my name, as well as our Assistant Director, Evan Storolasi. We'll touch more about his position and the impact that's had as we go through. So brief program overview. We have before and after-school programs at each of the elementary schools. We also do February and April vacation camps. We introduced a summer pilot program last summer, which we'll touch on. We currently have 753 individual registrations with 111 waitlisted students across all of our programs.
Wow.
There's a specified breakdown there. So 575 are currently enrolled in our before and after-school programs, with 60 waitlisted. Our middle school enrichment program is 160 students right now, which is actually up from last year. And we are running some enrichment at Boydin as well. We have 52 staff members, which is an increase from last year. And our biggest struggle is finding staff to help students come off these waitlists. And we have created three new positions that we'll touch on as well. So we've made some improvements to our programming, including new registration software that helps us with enhanced billing and data and analytics to go over that billing. In addition, that has a new attendance and dismissal procedure that we use, that timestamps when students come in and out of the program for accountability. The three new positions that we created were the Full-Time Assistant Director, which is Evan's position. And I do want to highlight, Evan started, I think, when he was 16, as an extended-day assistant. Became a site coordinator, and is now an Assistant Director, is from Walpole, went through Walpole Public Schools, and is the best thing that ever happened to me. I want to make sure that...
We want to tell the baby.
I do want to give him credit for that. He's fantastic at his job. He really is. We introduced an Assistant Site Coordinator also. And that's just to give our staff and students more structure in the program. And then if a site coordinator gets sick or is out, there's that stability for the program and continuity. And we also worked to come up with a Behavior Support Specialist position. That was incredibly support, like, I can't emphasize enough how much support these three up here gave, in addition to John Quealy. And it really has impacted our programs to increase access for students that may have additional needs. And we will touch on that more. And that is actually being staffed by Raylene Assalon, who's a transition coach at the high school and is a licensed social worker. So we'll touch more on that. We also did introduce a monthly newsletter that goes out to families and a staff newsletter, where we share program updates, initiatives, pictures. We redesigned our website, which made me excited. I don't know if you guys share my excitement on that, but I did really enjoy doing that. And we've improved and aligned our staff professional development with the districts. So as you heard Naomi say, she came and ran our PD on the half-day. Our staff feedback has overwhelmingly been that they all loved Naomi. So that's good. But it was really, it was really great. She did a fantastic job of catering that two extended day. Our students spend six and a half hours at extended day, if they come morning and afternoon. And a big focus for me is creating a more professional environment for our staff. Give them the training they need and increase that accessibility through how they can help different students from all types of backgrounds. Program growth over the last four years. So in 2022, we had 344 students enrolled, not including waitlist. Right now, we're at 577 enrolled. So that's a 67% growth over the last four years, or three years. We anticipate that to go up again next year. And it really does highlight, I think, the need that the community has and the importance of these programs for families across the district. Our summer pilot program. So this is a big undertaking. And prior to implementing this, we did reach out to families, try to target what that need was, and be mindful that there are other programs, like the rec department, that run, you know, summer programming. And really figure out what it is that our families want and our students want. So we did run a four-week program, the late pickup option, at the beginning of the summer to fill the gap between the end of school and summer on-stone starting. And we had 131 students. We ran STEM, sports, all camp activities. You can see in that picture the top left. We had our district lead nurse, Linda Anderson, actually worked at the camp as our nurse. And she offered free, at the program, first aid training for all of the students enrolled. So they got CPR, they learned basic first aid, how to wrap different limbs up, and all the kids loved it. We got really positive feedback from the families on that, and it was at no additional cost, which is fantastic. Out of our family feedback survey, and I will tell you guys, I'm kind of a data nerd. I love numbers, and I think surveys are fantastic. 96% of our families said that they would re-register and actually asked for additional weeks because their children enjoyed it so, excuse me, so much. Some of the feedback is here. I'm not going to read these verbatim, but it was really nice to see this and share this with our staff. You know, my son really enjoyed the camp. We wish we had more time. We wish there were more sessions. Great option, especially in the early weeks. Camp's, that's a long one, I'm not going to read that one. But it is good to see that feedback from the families and the impact that it is having during that time for the students. Our middle school programming, so this started last year with the completion of the new middle school and the facilities there. So we run three sessions, winter, fall, and spring. They all run for six weeks. The proceeds from enrollment are contributed directly back to the middle school. So that helps pay for, not only scholarships for students who may not be able to afford the programs, but also different material costs and things like that for the middle school. So fall enrollment last year, as I said earlier, was 141 with 52 students waitlisted. This year, we had 160 with 51 waitlisted. One thing I will note with that, our most popular program last year was volleyball. And that is not including volleyball, because it hasn't started yet. We're anticipating 30 to 40 students, so that number will be close to 190 to 200, just for the fall programming. And those numbers stay pretty consistent throughout the year. Those are some of the classes that we offer down at the bottom. Not all of them. Right now, we're offering 19 programs. But I did put them there. I wanted to highlight the variety of them. And the middle school does have some really great facilities. And I want to give credit to the middle school staff for utilizing those and being really creative in offering these programs to our students. Beads of Hope, I think, has been discussed. That's having a great impact. And because of, in addition to the materials that we're able to contribute to the middle school, we're able to run programs like Beads of Hope or Helping Homeless Pets at an incredibly reduced rate, using some of the proceeds from those other programs to help material costs and things like that, to make them more accessible. Family and community support is another area of focus for us. So based on family survey and data, we've been able to enhance our programming to targeted needs from the community. We've increased staff professional development, worked very closely with Bill Han and Naomi and others in the district to align those. Naomi, as she said, ran her PD called Tools for Responding, Not Reacting. Great name, and also really great training. As I said, our staff enjoyed it. And our staff have also received verbal safety care training, which I run for the district. They have not gotten the other half of it, but just align that better, so that the language used in our programs is the same that they're hearing during the school day. And then continuing with various community engagement activities. Every winter, we do ornaments and cards to give to the Council on Aging, and also cards for first responders in town. We have a pop tab initiative that we do at all of our programs, that we partner with the Ronald McDonald House and collect pop tabs, you know, like the, like on your can there. And that's actually led into the school day, especially at OPR. It's really popular at OPR. And all the proceeds from that are used to help pay for medical bills for families that have, you know, sick children that can't afford it. And we started that two years ago, and it's still continuing year over year, and is, you know, one of the more popular initiatives that we've started within all of our programs. District support, so the extended day program does provide some district financial support. We're currently offsetting three custodial salaries in our budget, and we're also contributing to playground repairs at each of the elementary schools to help with operating budgets. We have a big focus on fiscal management and responsibility. That allows us to scholarship students who may not have a state voucher, but still need access to the program, and those can come in various forms. The approved fee increases over the last two years have resulted in additional revenue, but we're maintaining lower rates than neighboring districts. Out of all of our neighboring districts, we have the lowest rates for extended day morning and afternoon, which is important. We want to continue to do that, provide accessibility to families. And the way that we, I'm held accountable to that is I have monthly meetings with Mike Frischa to make sure that our budget is healthy and that our funds are being used appropriately. And increased accessibility, so this is super important to me. I have a special education background. The number of students that we're seeing that need additional supports has increased program-wide. That requires additional staff training and awareness. The goal is that we want our programs to be accessible, safe, and engaging for all students as much as possible. And we've worked very closely with John Quealy and individual building programs and school day staff to find ways to support students on an individual basis if there are additional needs that present themselves. And one way that we've done this is that new behavior support position, which, the feedback that we have received from families so far this year that have interacted with Raylene or had a need to interact with that position has been overwhelmingly positive. And it actually has, from our staff side, the feedback that they've given me, given them that onsite, in-the-moment training and modeling, which, you know, between Evan and I, there's only two of us for a program, so it does really increase the opportunity for that to take place. Looking ahead, we'd like to continue to expand the scope of our programming, full school year, and we are considering expanding that summer program due to family feedback. We also want to continue to strengthen communication channels with families and make data-informed decisions to better meet community needs. And then increase staffing and program culture. So we do have a waitlist. I anticipate that the waitlist, we will continue to work down, but it does exist. And in order to release students from that waitlist because of our regulations and ratios, we do have to increase staffing. So we are working to do that. The ways that we're doing that is we're partnering with local colleges and community colleges, going in, doing presentations in education programs, going to their career nights. We have our job postings. And then working with people like Naomi and Linda, leveraging the resources we already have in the district to increase that professional development and the capacity of our staff to continue to better meet those needs. And that is all I have.
Excellent. Anybody have any comments or questions?
Let me try it.
Okay.
I was surprised to see that the waitlists were as big as they are. But you're right, you have to have the right level of staff to make it work. And I was also glad to hear you say that you'd reached out to some of the local community colleges or, you know, schools nearby that have education programs, because that's a possibility. Would you consider, and you probably do have some high school students that work for you?
Yep.
Middle school, is that too young from your point of view?
Yeah, due to, so we're licensed by the EEC
Okay.
in order to accept state childcare vouchers.
Yeah.
And they have a whole separate set of regulations that we have to abide by for not only volunteers, but also employees.
Okay.
That wouldn't be...
I was just remembering back to one of my best babysitters. I started in 7th grade, and she was amazing. But that makes sense. This other question is for Mike Frischa. You mentioned the fee increases. Have we built something in on a regular basis? Or is that something that we should be sort of planning to look at later on this year?
So we were going to do, I think it was two years, and then pause
Kind of evaluate.
and review it, evaluate how it's going. I asked Dan to add a couple of points in there about the fees in particular, because I know nobody wants rate increases or fee increases, especially in the environment we're in. But we still maintain that lowest in the area, and that's important to both of us, as well as, I'm sure, you guys, that we offer a good product at a really fair price.
Yeah. Thank you.
Major? I just want to acknowledge the huge undertaking that this is, and incredible that you were even doing this without an Assistant Director.
Oh, I am now, yeah.
So that's incredible. Like, just, and when you said, like, they're here for six hours, like, you know, there's... It puts a perspective on it that I didn't have. That's like before school program, after school program. They're there for six hours. It's almost the entire, an entire school day, additional school day.
Yeah.
So I think it's fantastic, you know, that you created like a really engaging and robust programming for during the year and the summer, but just acknowledging how much work that is, and thank you for doing it.
Thank you for that. And like I said, I think, I will say this. I've had the opportunity to work with a lot of districts across the state prior to coming here. And I will say, the culture of schools in Walpole, from the administration at the central level down to the building principals, really is unique, and it's a very positive, incredible thing to see. And it makes it that much easier to provide this level of programming.
Great. Thank you.
Excellent. Carrie?
Yeah, I was going to use the word culture, but you beat me to it.
Sorry.
No, no, I think, you know, I think what's, obviously, a lot of what you're doing is providing a needed support for families. But you're, a lot of the work you're doing is also really positive culture building within the community. And I think that goes for all three presentations we heard tonight, right? Like, the fact that we are giving our extended-day staff very high-quality professional development and helping them see themselves as professionals and part of the district, and not just, you know, a babysitter after school. The fact that we are offering clubs at the middle school, that's exactly what we all hoped was going to happen when we, you know, built the new building. But because it is such a great way to build school culture, kids meet kids, they don't, they wouldn't otherwise know. They interact with staff, they build relationships with staff, they wouldn't otherwise know. And they're kept busy in a really productive and positive way, and they're finding out their interests. And extended day too, is, I know that a lot of great stuff happens there. I'm excited to sign up for summer camp next year. And so, yeah, just, just thank you. It sounds like this program is really, really thriving, and the benefits are being felt everywhere across the district. So thank you for that, and your staff.
Yeah, thank you.
Through you, Carrie, you can go yourself to summer camp, but...
We are hiring if you want to.
I'd like to go as well.
Summer camp serves me as much as it serves street children.
As someone who always in budget time is like, hey, Mike, can we make extended day for this? I think you're doing a great job. And I think it's important to note, as we sit here for longer and longer, there was a time when the programs that happened and supported our students after the regular school day were drags on the district and were in the red. And I think in both your case and in the case of food service, we've been able to make them, just putting aside all the important, very important student-focused pieces of it, they're now, plus, they're supportive of the wider goal. The fact that we can charge custodians back is fantastic. Even more important, the fact that we can look and say, a student may be able to, unable financially to fully access our offerings, the fact that we can continue to be competitive and do it better, and in many cases, cheaper than our neighbors, and take care of people who cannot fully access it, is fantastic. So you're checking like all of the admin- So you're checking like all of the administrative boxes. And the other thing too is I think it's, as we look at the waitlist, it's good that we're not just building something and say, hey, let's hire somebody and do a couple of programs and see if it sticks. We're doing it in like a careful way, although I think everybody on this, on this stage here tonight was very excited about volleyball, heard the parent excitement about volleyball, the anticipation of volleyball, I think we did like six or seven. People were, people were really into it. And that's cool, because I think when you go back to student outcomes, for many people, many of our youngsters perhaps, they're not as excited to get in there for history at nine in the morning. But hey, you get volleyball at the end of the day, and that's the sort of, the start that you, you set yourself to. It's like, we're going to get through today, I'm going to play volleyball at the end, and that's what's going to motivate them to get through it. So I think this is great. I also, I appreciate your approach because there's, there's this like point where we end and rec begins, right, in your world?
Yeah.
And I appreciate that, as we, like, we used to have a very robust summer academy, and that sort of fell away over the, over the decades. And now you're looking at, okay, well, the rec does something in this time slot, you were able to offer something in, in the weeks before that. So you weren't competing with rec, but you also were filling a need that, you know, for those of us who don't decamp to months, we needed for the entire summer, needed some activities around here in Walpole. So I would, I would encourage you to sort of reach out. I know the rec director is brand new as well.
Yep.
And I don't see the two in competition. I think there's like some really cool stuff that we can grow into in the summer especially and continue to provide value, make money to help the district, and provide opportunities for students. So I think it's really cool. But I liked how you sort of started that, again, not by going whole hog, but being careful and building something slowly, which is, I think, the way we want to see management happen here.
Thank you.
But make more money for us too.
Yeah.
No, didn't. Excellent.
Thank you very much. That was super informative.
Thanks.
Okay, next up, we have superintendent cross, superintendent report.
All right, it's been a lot, lot of happenings the past two weeks. So last week, last Tuesday, Wednesday, several of our staff attended Masque Conference at Gillette. That's New England's leading education technology conference. We had a strong attendance from Walpole, from members of our tech team, our digital learning coaches, our STEM staff, both Tom Reeve and Dr. Hahn were in attendance as well. A special thank you, I just want to give a shout out to Karen Wolf. She represented Walpole as one of the workshop presenters. So it was a wonderful opportunity to showcase the great work that's happening in the district. Last week, I believe it was last Wednesday, we had the multilingual learner family meet and greet dinner at the Walpole Middle School. Very well-attended. We had a great turnout. I want to thank Jill Kimball and all of the ESL teachers, and Dr. Hahn was there as well. We had some wonderful feedback from our families about the importance of the program and also the warm welcome that they received from Walpole Public Schools. So just that sentiment of feeling welcome and heard seemed to be echoed throughout that evening, and it's really a testament to all the contributions of the members of the entire Walpole School community. So that was really nice. You all know that we had a town meeting on Monday, and the approval of funds reflected the adjustments in our FY '26 budget was based on the finalized state figures. And our capital items were also approved, including the Chromebook replacements, the new security camera at Old Post Road, interactive smart boards, and then snow removal equipment. In alignment with Goal Four of our district plan, we will also be replacing additional security cameras that'll come out of, you know, our budget as well. As a leadership team, we continue to place strong emphasis on instructional leadership. So we've actively been engaging in classroom visits with our focus on priority indicators. And that's really zeroing in on student-centered instructional practices. So our goal is to ensure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students where they are and support their growth and their development. So across all levels, leadership teams are going in and looking for evidence of student voice and student choice, intentional implementation of instructional strategies in these student-centered learning practices. So in other words, our visits start from the perspective of I see students doing X. I hear students doing. And the focus is really what students are doing and saying and learning in the classrooms. And also in line with this work, Dr. Hahn has been conducting walkthroughs with principals to support our first-year teachers, helping them, to give them guidance and feedback as well. I held my first student, superintendent student cabinet yesterday. It was great to see the energy and enthusiasm in the room. It's a packed house. Everyone was engaged, ready to jump into the work. We started with an overview of the cabinet's purpose, some feedback, and took a look at what we've accomplished, what we accomplished last year, and then discussing our possible priorities for this year. So productive start. We're going to meet actually in two weeks and continue and keep that momentum going. I also want to talk about the AI steering team. This is going to go out in the principal e-notes tomorrow. So over the past few years, there's been a lot of conversation, a national conversation about new AI technologies and how they're changing the way we work, live, and learn. Tom Reeve mentioned that, and I know Carrie brought it up as well as part of that Q and A and discussion. So this year, Walpole Public Schools is beginning an intentional and thoughtful process to explore both the opportunities and the challenges that come with AI. So our goal is to identify how we can use these tools to enhance teaching and learning in our daily operations while also being mindful to their limitations and potential pitfalls. So this important work is being developed and led by Tom Reeve. He's our Director of Digital Learning and Technology. And one of the key components, there's, there's a few components, but one of the key components is the creation of a WPS AI steering team. So that team will include teachers, administrators, parents, and guardians, students, and other staff members. So you don't need to be an AI expert, just someone, he says, who is curious and open-minded. The group will meet about once a month after school. And families who are parents or guardians who are interested can find the signup link in the principal's e-notes, I mentioned that. There are a limited number of seats, but the selections will be made to ensure that we include, or he includes, a wide range of perspectives. So any questions can be directed to Tom Reeve. So he's excited and we're excited to start this process. Fails leach, the scholarship applications on next Friday is the last day, right, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay. And please be reminded, there's no school on Tuesday, November 11th, as we observe Veterans' Day, Daylight Savings, November 2nd, I believe, we fall back. And I have a couple of other items. One in your packets, you have the timeline, the process, it should say 25, 26. So December 4th, I just want to bring your attention to December 4th. That should be, that's going to be the school committing leadership workshop. That's, that's the date for all of us. And that will be at Walpole High School. Anything else on that one? On Mike, you know, we're going to change that date, it should say 25, 26.
It's fiscal year.
Yeah, fiscal year, so we're good.
Yeah.
Yeah. But the, but the date's down, going over.
Yeah.
Correct. Yep. And then the final one, just some housekeeping. Due to the MASC, MAS Conference, that's the Massachusetts Association of School Committee and the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, their conference this year is being held at the same time as the November 13th, November 13th. School committee meeting, and Nancy Galavan's attending, I'm attending. Bill's giving a wonderful presentation that we don't want to miss. So requesting, if it's possible, if we can change the meeting to November 20th.
She's talking about my presentation.
Do we have any problems with that?
Yeah.
Because if someone else, if Nancy's not here and then for some reason, somebody else, you know, a couple of the people, and we don't have a quorum, that's another concern.
They will do in your absence.
Hmm? Yes.
There's supervision there.
Thoughts you might make? All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that informative report, Richard. Next up, oh wow, middle school has rolled off of its business and now we have the Walpole High School. This is kind of crazy. Wow. All right, so high school update.
We had our PVC meeting last week.
Yep.
They're, still I see the glass for the greenhouse that's going in, so everything, as Mark Bean would say, is on time and on schedule. I do know for the middle school, they are starting the fieldwork tomorrow, right? And it'll take about a week.
A week.
And it'll be done.
With baseball field.
For the new varsity baseball.
Wow.
Yeah.
It looks almost done.
Finally.
Yeah, it looks great.
But we're gone on the high school.
Yeah, good shape. Okay, subcommittee activity.
No, but we do have a special ed committee coming up, and we have, we have the curriculum.
Yeah. Okay. Does anyone want to talk about curriculum or anything? Update this one?
We talked a little bit about the, what it takes to fit the parameters of homeschooling, which is just something we hadn't talked about in a long time. And then we talked a little bit about the middle school-related arts programs and how the music teachers are looking into ways of expanding general music to mean more than just music. Is that a fair way of describing it?
Yes.
Yeah. Some, you know, art, other art, like, you know, potential dance and, you know, with performance that brings in like, you know, lighting and technology and that, like, it kind of helped, it could branch out into other areas if we, you know, consider the different types of music and performing arts as well.
I'd love to be invited to the next one, because as you know, choice is hugely important for me, having non-musical children. I like other options besides just music. So I would love to, now that we have a new middle school, I think it's great to make sure we're meeting the needs of all kids in the district. So not just performing arts. I've been advocating for broader than that, so. Excellent. Any other subcommitting activity?
No. No. No, we have a special ed one coming up next week.
Excellent. All right, citizens comments? There are no citizens, so approval of warrants. Who has the warrant?
I will take that. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following warrants. Payroll warrant 2614 PS. Accounts payable for school, special education, and student activity funds under 226015. And accounts payable for schools, food services, and special education under 226016, for the amounts listed in your packets.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, one, two, three. Wow, end of the night here. Okay, five, zero, zero.
Six.
Six. Oh, gosh, I can't even count right.
Can I, so?
So six, zero, zero.
That was tricky.
Um, next, do you have another warrant or are you done? Or is this it?
That was it. It was a lady thing.
Yeah, wow, okay. Gifts.
Sure. I'll make a motion to accept the following gifts and donations to Walpole Middle School from Base Day Textiles, $57.60, and to Fisher from Base Day Textiles, $113.10.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Vissio, second by Mr. Green, all those in favor. Okay, six, zero, zero. Got it right that time. And minutes.
And my chairman, a motion to approve the October 9th, 2025, school committee regular meeting minutes and the October 16th, 2025, curriculum subcommittee meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Buckley, second by Mr. Green, all those in favor.
Sorry, I'm going to make the math weird because I'm a student.
Okay, so five, zero, one, yes. Okay. All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Green, second by Mr. Rogers, all those in favor. Okay, six, zero, zero, and we're, that's a wrap.